Okay, I would like to call the Village of Lansing Planning Board Meeting of Monday, July 11th, 2022 to order at 7:01 PM. Pat and I are here and Jim and Lisa are online. So first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for June 13th. Did everybody get a chance to take a look at those? I know Mike sent them out, had some edits from Lisa on there. Um, I'll enter, any changes to anything? Lisa or Jim?
No, I submitted what I suggested. I don't, other than that, no.
I will entertain the motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Pat?
Second.
Second by Lisa. All in favor?
Aye.
Second item on the agenda is the public comment period. So this is a chance for anybody online or excuse me, here in person to bring up anything that is not already on the agenda for tonight?
I'd like to bring something up.
Can you just state your name?
Sure. Kip Saracero.
And actually, you know, if you stand at the podium, there's a microphone there, right? It'll probably just pick you up.
All right. Yeah, Kip Saracero, 12-year village resident, 150 Graham Road. And I come to you tonight to talk about something that has been a growing concern in the neighborhood. And it's the university apartments located on Graham Road. I've had conversations with Mike Scott, the mayor, Deborah Dawson, and various county leaders about this growing safety and health concern with this building. So I wanted to bring this to everyone's attention far and wide to talk about this, to see what can be done or what is being done at every level of local government, whether it's the county or village, town, to get it on everyone's radar about what's happening there. And just for some context, I have some stats that Sheriff Osborne has shared with me. In 2020, there were a total of 97 police visits to this apartment complex alone, combination of sheriff and state police. 2021, 122 reports directly affiliated with the apartment complex. And in 2022, to date, as of May 1st, there were a total of 93 already. And that can range from theft, domestics, harassment, you name it, there's a whole gamut of responses. And it's literally, you know, every other day, there is a police presence there. And I just have some anecdotal stories to share with everybody about what's happening. And I bring my family here today to kind of, you know, capture where I'm coming from. And it's not uncommon to have verbal threats. You know, just a few weeks ago, I was threatened by someone who lives at the apartment because I was inspecting something that was on my property that they felt I shouldn't be. You know, police were called and they dealt with it, but you know, nothing ever really came of it. So that's just one thing. And there's a whole list. And I've shared this and Mike Scott has been included in these conversations about, you know, what can we do about, you know, enforcing specific codes or violations of this building? And if you've driven past there, you know, it's in poor shape. I mean, aside from the shopping carts, there's just garbage everywhere. There's maybe two dumpsters for a four-building complex that's three stories tall. I mean, that's unacceptable. Garbage is always overflowing. There's needles that are littered around the property. I found needles on my property. The church next door to me has found needles in their parking lot. They had a vacation Bible school just last week, or it was two weeks ago, and the pastor had to clean up needles because he had children that were going to be there. There's also homeless encampments back there. And as we know, you know, with homelessness, there's, you know, substance abuse. So, you know, there's all kinds of paraphernalia. And with the rise of fentanyl, you know, that stuff is so toxic and so lethal that if a small child picks something up that had the substance on there, it could be a fatal dose. Where does this responsibility fall? Who is going to be held to task if something drastic or God forbid, something like this would ever happen? Shots fired is not uncommon. You know, altercations on a daily basis. It's terrible. I don't know how else I can explain it or detail it, but it's to a point where it's just a powder keg ready to blow. And I'm here today to just share this with the planning board to see if there's anything within the legal ramifications of how we can hold this landlord accountable, how we can hold the people accountable and keep things safe for not only my family, but the other residents of Graham Road and the surrounding areas. And unfortunately, they couldn't make it today because of work and other things, but I'm kind of speaking on their behalf. And it also is for the other families that live in this apartment complex that are subjected to this, you know, day-to-day, you know, environment that is just not healthy for anybody. So, you know, my last email correspondence was June 22nd. Mike Scott was the only person that responded. The mayor, nothing. Deborah Dawson, nothing. Other community leaders from the county level, nothing. And I'm at a point now where shrugging shoulders is not an acceptable response. And I would like some action and at least put something on the table where we have a plan moving forward and how we can address these concerns. And if there isn't one now, maybe there is, I don't know, but that was never conveyed to me. I was just told that government, you know, is a long process and there's some things that we can't do, you know, something like that. And, you know, that's not acceptable, you know, for county leaders that are elected to represent, you know, their constituents and fight for their causes and be a champion of, you know, community. So I'm holding everyone to task and I want to make it known that this cannot continue for the sake of our community, for the sake of my family and the neighborhood. I would just like that on the record. And that's basically it. So, thank you.
No, thank you. Um, Mike, is there, is there anything that you wanted to add to that? I mean, he's been in correspondence with you, anything to bring up or not? You're muted, by the way.
I don't disagree with Kip at all. We have, I have written up many citations for that place. Some things do get better, some things don't. But I do agree with Kip that it needs to be a joint effort with our politicians in the area. And I know this is on the radar with the mayor because I have discussed it with him. So I know it's hard to be patient or whatnot, but I will, I will try to keep pushing this to, you know, see what can be done for some improvements on that road.
And so, Kip, one of the things you could do, honestly, just like you're here tonight with us, you mentioned that you had written the mayor and not heard anything. They hold meetings just like this twice a month with the mayor and the trustees. You're welcome. They have a public comment period just like we do. You're welcome to go and deliver that message to them in person, same as you are here with us. You know, as far as, you know, citations and enforcement of the code go, that is Mike's office. And, you know, it is, the Village of Lansing doesn't have, most of what we have for enforcement of code and things like that comes from, Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but comes from, or Natalie, comes from the state law to enforce them. And like Mike said, there is a process that goes through, to go through for that. It's unfortunately not a, nothing quick, like many other things with the government, but what you're doing so far, that, you know, those are the right steps to follow to. Yeah, I understand. It's not a snap thing that can be done or addressed, but at least if I can be assured, if we can be assured that something is being done, I think that would at least kind of give people a better feeling that, you know, there is change on the horizon. I know the city of Binghamton has a citation policy where if there is a delinquent landlord that isn't making improvements, you know, the, the building is then, you know, closed down and possibly, you know, torn down after X amount of citations and nothing being done. I don't know if it's anything that we can adhere. I assume that's part of state law or something similar.
Local procedure, may I not have provided for that? I will look into that and see whatever measures we can take if they're not responding to Mike's citations appropriately.
I think there's probably not many in the village that would fall under that. It may be just the apartment complex, but I mean, maybe it's something to look at and see if we could change policy so, you know, we can work within the means of the law to, you know, put some pressure on the landlord and make him or her responsible and responsive to this instead of, you know, just kind of here and there, but maybe make things uncomfortable for the others. Absolutely. And like Mike said, I, you know, I, obviously, we all live here in the, live here in the village. I do not disagree with you. And so you're following the right steps. And I wouldn't encourage you though, to go to the next, Mike, do you know when the next trustee meeting is?
I would say it's next Monday, isn't it, Mike? Next, the 18th, because I'm covering that as Lee is on.
So they're here Monday at 7:30 PM. Their meeting starts just a half hour behind ours, but yeah. So, and it's the same format. And I would encourage you to go and deliver that same message to them also. Yeah, thank you. And that's, I mean, that's all I have for today. I agree. We do appreciate you coming and sharing. Definitely, we always want to hear, same as us, sharing concerns with folks in the village, things that are happening here, because we're all spread out. I know it's not a huge village, but we are spread out, so it's good to hear that information too.
Thanks, Kip. I will continue to try to work on this.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Any other comments from public?
My name is Carla Marso. I'm here as an observer for the community party.
Okay. Um, I will entertain the motion to close the public commentary.
I will move, close public commentary.
I will second.
Second by Lisa. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the continuation of the public hearing for special permit number 2022-4575. It's the, excuse me, Maguire Chevy Cadillac located at 35 Cinema Drive, tax parcel 46.1-6-5.12, seeking to update the existing building with improvements to the interior showroom, areas, service area and body shop. I know they were here at the last meeting and we asked for some updated paths with additional information drawn on them, mainly around parking spots having to do with the swing of the delivery trucks moving in and a couple other items. So, Mike, do you want to let us know where we are with that?
John Snyder, he's throwing Bear into the fire. So if there's any questions from our last meeting, Bear is here to help out and see if he can answer some of those. I was told by John that there was some discussion with Brett about some things. I'm not, is that, is that true, Brett?
Yeah, so Ron Mogren, who works for the civil engineering firm Saratoga Associates, that's a consultant for John Snyder Architects, he's, he was involved with all of the stormwater management for the Nissan. We had a conversation and clarified that I was looking for, you know, I think you'll recall these exact words that I shared at the meeting last month is that as this is a redevelopment project, redevelopment rules are much less stringent than new construction. And so there would be a limited amount of exposure and, but that the village, past practice has always been to ask the applicant to do the best they can, do, you know, do something more than the minimum, you know, not all the way to the full blown, but, you know, do something. So I think that when I talked to Ron about that, he wasn't necessarily, he thought we were talking about do what was necessary to meet the redevelopment standard, which was pretty minimal. After the conversation, I think he had an appreciation of that we were really asking for something more than that. And he did convey our conversation, the conversation Ron and I had, he summarized it in a message to John Snyder. I think that the intention was is to put together a preliminary plan to, to give us some kind of an understanding of what it is that they would do. Some, I believe that he was proposing some underground storage chambers, probably very similar to what was used at the Nissan project, although that's supposition on my part. Unfortunately, I don't, I have not seen anything from Ron since our conversation. I did try to reach out to John Snyder today and maybe Bear's presence here might explain. I did not have a callback from John, so maybe he's unavailable. But at this point, my question to John was, and I guess this is a question, well, it's a, it's a comment in the form of a question to the trust, or to the planning board members is if everything else about this project is ready to go, do you want to, you know, postpone a decision until the plan is presented and I can review it? Or do you have interest in moving to a, an approval, a conditional approval that would have some kind of a condition that would read that, you know, the stormwater management plan would need to be approved by village engineer and the village stormwater management officer prior to issuance of the building permit? You know, I sense that there, if they're going to do the underwater, underground chambers, it wouldn't be difficult for them to, you know, provide a, a vast improvement over the redevelopment standards. And so I'm anticipating they can, can put together a plan. I just, I don't think there was enough time lapsed in between the conversation that Ron and I had and tonight. So I've rambled a little bit and maybe John, maybe Bear has some more knowledge than what I've got.
Um, yeah, so speaking to those items, so yes, John is on vacation this week and that's why you didn't hear back from him and I'm here tonight. We did get, we did have a conversation with Ron Mogren based off of your conversation that you had together. We are working through that to try to get some details and figure out what that solution is going to look like. Ultimately, our goal is to improve the stormwater situation on the site. And we understand the directive that you have provided. We're just trying to work through the details of both what is going to be feasible and also make sure that we're meeting the intent of what the village is looking for. So I don't have any updates in regards to that right now. As I said, we're working through that. We did explore some other site elements. Mostly, I know truck access was one of the concerns that was shared with me that we're trying to improve and to address that. I do have an updated site plan that I could share. Not a whole lot has changed on it, but we're moving, it is our intent to move one of the driveways to relieve the turning radius stress on the north side. Is it possible for me to share that image and walk through it with you?
Yes.
Yeah, you should be able to.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. So this should be the old plan that we showed you on the end of May. And let me zoom in here. So I apologize that we haven't rendered it up nicely like the previous plan. This was kind of last minute. But what we're looking at is this, this driveway that's on the east side of the building, looking at shifting that so it's in line with the driveline, which would both relieve the concern for us of trucks getting too close to the building when they're trying to turn and exit there and just make a safer condition for everyone. And by doing this, it would give us the opportunity for trucks to be able to come between the two buildings and out the bottom driveway here, being able to get the trucks off the road when they're making their deliveries. I know that was a big concern and we're trying to address that. Another thing that will be forthcoming, and unfortunately, I don't have more information to share at the moment, but the layout of the Cadillac showroom, the footprint is still very similar. We're not getting any closer to the road, but the program is flipping and there is going to be an addition out in this little section here, mostly due to the fact of talking with the corporate entity Cadillac. They were initially interested in putting customer parking back here and we felt that that wasn't quite appropriate. So we are going to be putting all the customer parking is going to be in this front lot and both of the primary entrances for the building will be on that same face. So that will be forthcoming. My goal is to have updated drawings for you for the next meeting to be able to fully digest and go through all of this. But that's pretty much all I have at the moment. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
No. No, and Beth, when we were talking about this last time, that seemed kind of the only option. So I'm glad that Beth's been arrived at to, so you're essentially moving that entrance closer to the east side, right, or widening it?
Correct. So there is, so it will involve needing to relocate the one catch basin up a little bit higher, but we're essentially, instead of, here, I can show you on the old plan. The old plan, you kind of had to make this snake, serpentine kind of movement to get in and out of the site. And that's kind of the existing condition. And it's just not ideal, both for traffic safety and also getting on and off the site, getting trucks on and off, frankly. So to address those concerns, also to make it just safer for pedestrians and for patrons of the site, we decided that we're going to bite the bullet and we're going to shift it over just to make it safer for everyone involved.
Well, that's, I think that's good because this has been an ongoing concern for some time, the whole unloading. So it's nice to see working towards a solution.
Hey, Bear, this is Mike Scott. Is that, that curb cut's going to become smaller, correct, in the front there than it is right now?
The curb cut on the east side?
Yeah, going out on Uptown Road, as it is right in front of the display. I mean, there's a big curb cut there.
Yes. So the intent is that we want to do a display. So as you're probably currently aware, they put display vehicles out on that edge already and it has a very wide curb cut. The intent is to extend the curb, limit the asphalt access there, but still provide this display sidewalk so we can still put vehicles on that side of the building, but we don't have to worry so much about having that wide interaction between the road and the property.
I think that that's a huge plus. I think that'll look much better.
Jim, did you have any comments?
No, I'm, I guess my question is, I thought when we were shown the other one, that the proposed route for the car haul delivery trucks would be to go around to the east of the Nissan building and exit, exit onto Uptown Road from there. But now it sounds like you're saying that you bring the trucks behind the, I'll call it the existing Chevy Cadillac building and, and exit out with that painted crosswalk's going to be, or did I misunderstand?
Um, so, no, you are correct. We were initially showing that there was a potential of going from Cinema Drive up around the Nissan and out onto Uptown Road, up by the Nissan property. The reason why we're interested in doing this is those are technically two different parcels. So I, we thought that it would be best to try to find a solution on the parcel itself. But this does give the client an opportunity where if they have a truck that's unloading, the other driveway is still accessible. So it's not limiting one entire portion of the site or the other. So both are still going to be viable options depending on the day-to-day interaction. But we thought providing this just made sense from a number of different perspectives.
Well, I'm somewhat familiar with, since I've gone to that dealership quite a bit over the years, that the route, I mean, when you say they're separate parcels, that's true, but they're both part of the Maguire family.
That is correct, yes.
Oh, you know, it's, you know, one's Nissan, one's Chevy Cadillac, but, but the route around, because I did one time, a couple weeks ago, took a, took a drive up there and the route around to the east of the Nissan looks like is, is very roomy, whereas the passageway that's to the east of the Chevy dealership or the service area, like kind of near where your arrow is, but a little bit to the left. That's, that's actually pretty narrow. And even for an automobile, getting out that, getting out that driveway onto Cinema Road, you gotta, you gotta turn and be careful, much less. So moving the curb cut and maybe winding it makes sense, but it's still pretty narrow between the wall, between that wall, you know, the borders of Nissan dealership around. Whereas the other route looks to be much more spacious and with bigger radius, bigger radio.
Ultimately, what we'll probably end up seeing is that the delivery trucks for the vehicles themselves will probably take that route around Nissan. But for the parts trucks, like the box trucks and stuff like that, the service department and the parts department's right on this backside. So they're, they're already going in this section. So they're the ones that are probably going to benefit the most from having this new, this shifted entrance.
Yeah, and those are different kinds of trucks. I thought you were talking the vehicle delivery trucks.
Yeah. Let me put it this way, it's, it's possible for them to turn this way, but probably not their preferred route.
No. But the box trucks and everything, that's, you know, they're, they're not long trailers and that's, that's totally different.
Yep.
Anything else, Jim?
Um, no, I did, I said something and I just want to make sure I'm right. You said you're also, you're realigning and straightening out the curb cut for the, for the exit on that alleyway or driveway behind the exit to the service department. Did you say you're also widening the curb cut where that painted crosswalk is?
No, so there, the curb cut, I don't know, no, it's not in that image. So the curb cut currently comes to almost the front of the current Cadillac portion of the building and it's straight asphalt all the way to the curb cut roughly where the painted crosswalk is currently. What we're doing is we're actually reducing the curb cut to just be only at this access point. So then that way, it's less prevalent. I actually experienced it today of someone pull, parallel parking on there and blocking visibility. So it removes that potential for that.
Yeah.
Yep.
No, I know where you mean. It's tricky, it's tricky if you're in that alleyway or maybe service department to exit out where that painted crosswalk is. It is kind of tricky. You have to turn and look carefully.
Yep, we're trying to make it, we're trying to make a bad situation a lot safer. I don't think we're going to get it as nice as maybe the Nissan entrance, but it's definitely going to be a massive improvement compared to the current condition.
Okay. I don't think I have any more questions at this point.
Okay. Pat?
I had the same concern about the alleyway there that Jim had. Bear, for that curb cut, you know, that, what right now is meant to be the entrance for the trucks coming in. Is that, are you going to have it as entrance only so that there's not a problem with cars trying to exit there, being, having their vision blocked?
Um, is program wise, no. So the driveway is going to be 22 foot wide, which is pretty typical for a two-way traffic. It is snug against the building, but given the current condition, there actually isn't the full 22 feet for that turn and it's being. full twenty-two feet for that turn and it's being used as a two-way. And there's evidence uh um large vehicles have hit the corner of the building. Uh so a big reason for making the shift is to not have a turn right next to the building and re- uh reduce the uh inter, the interaction potential between vehicles and the building itself. Um and also by doing this, it's going to get it further away from this intersection of Cinema and Uptown Drive. Um and it's going to get it almost nice and evenly placed between the Nissan entrance and that road. Um so visibility wise, it gives a, a better opportunity for people to see both directions and make sure that they're, they're having a safe uh um entrance or exit to the site.
Hey Barrett, do you mind if I take over the screen share for just a second?
Go for it.
Yeah, could, could you stop sharing real quick?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yep.
Just uh so folks can kind of visualize it, right? So there's the um, there's the, the current, you know, view of it, right? There's that real long curb cut along the front where the cars are and then there's the um, there's this area here. Yeah, the area, the area by where the tree is, that's the area that the um, that the curb cut would get adjusted in there.
Correct. Yeah, there's a existing, uh well, so I don't think that tree is existing anymore because of the work that happened at Nissan, the Yeah, um but so the catch basin will be moved further east um up the hill. Um same configuration to make sure it's appropriately uh draining. Um but then it will be a straight shot from that back portion of the building up onto uh Uptown Road. Um so roughly where you see the stairs in that image, that's where we're going to start elevating the grade um to try to make a nice smooth transition. So you don't have like a hill that you got to interact with um coming up and out of the site.
Okay. Okay, um well, uh so we're definitely, you know, still waiting for some information, not ready to to act on anything tonight. But Mike, did you have comment?
Uh Brent, Brent's got his hand up. I was
Sorry, you see that Brent? Go ahead, Brent.
Yeah, um on the image that Bear had up, there was a little bit of an interesting uh detail that I think that probably ought to be addressed, which is that the new hey, uh concrete surface in the front of the dis, of the showroom, the other image you had, the, the drawing image. If you look uh close to where there's a number ten, the dimension number ten.
Yeah.
You're actually showing that encroaching into the village right away.
That, that is correct. Um the hope would be the, given the fact uh that is one wide sea of asphalt at the moment and has been being used for displaying vehicles. The, if we're extending the curb across, we would be allowed the opportunity to keep the vehicles back against the building. Um, sure, trying to benefit both parties here.
Sure, I would agree. It's an improvement. I don't want to be, make it be a negative comment. But the difference is, is that we don't know what the history of all that sea of asphalt is. And here we are, you know, trying to clean up the, the documentation. And I don't know where um Natalie would stand on this, but it seems like that if they do want to have that, that the trustees may have to grant a license or some kind of right-of-way easement separately from whether it's, whether it's good from the planning board perspective is uh the planning board really doesn't, I don't think has the authority to make that decision on behalf of the overall village, whether or not something is constructed in a right of way.
Yeah, it probably needs to be a condition that an easement or license is granted by the Board of Trustees.
Yeah, yeah, we, we had a similar situation in City of Syracuse where we went through the process of gain uh an encroachment agreement. Um and we're, we're open to doing that same process if uh that would be uh agreeable.
Yeah, okay, good.
Um aside from the uh stormwater, I'd still recommend to the planning board the hold off on any decisions and let's get some plans. Um I'm still looking for some setbacks from uh to John Schneider, so he's gonna send to us in case there was any need for any type of variances. But you know, we still have little ways, I think we can still go on this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ask one more thing is, was it, we got back the, the two thirty-nine and you've shared that with them, right, Mike?
Yes, I sent the two thirty-nine over to uh John Schneider and he, they basically had to do the same thing for the Nissan and that was to uh show what type of energy-saving devices they were going to use, especially with their lighting process.
So we haven't seen that yet either. So, yeah, we
Yeah. Yeah, tha- tha- that is correct. Uh um we haven't shown anything on that yet. Uh it is on our radar. We do intend to go through that same process and uh um show you all this. It's going to be very similar to the Nissan process um of making sure that we hit all those points and we, we clearly indicate that for the board.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And Mike, and I forgive everybody, really, we brought it up last time, right? Um did we bring up signage last time? Because I remember that was um a big topic uh for the Nissan dealership. So just something to keep in mind for this project too is signage.
Yeah, and that was related over to John also and he's
Yep, um so I don't have any further information about signage at this moment. But my anticipation would be is that we will need to pursue a signage variance. Um given the fact that we have two brands at this location. Um and seeing what we can do to make sure that we're being respectful of the ordinance and also making sure that we're drawing positive inten- uh uh attention to the site.
Great, okay. Well, thanks a lot, Bear, for coming. And uh like I said, we'll take this uh public hearing open for um for the next meeting that um that, you know, somebody from the uh McGuire or John Snyder is available to, to come and present.
Yeah, we're, we're hoping to show you more and uh give you better information uh at the next meeting. So thank you for your time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Bear.
Yeah.
Uh okay, next item on the agenda is the continuation for the public hearing for subdivision number twenty-two-two dash forty-five ninety-two. Sean and Rachel Ryan, owners of Seventy-seven Graham Road, tax parcel number forty-six point one dash one dash six point twenty-four. Are proposing to subdivide their nine point three-three-four acre lot. The proposed parcel B would be twenty thousand and five square feet or point four-five-nine acres and would have one hundred and one point five feet of frontage along Dart Drive. The existing parcel A would then contain the remaining eight point seven-five acres. Um so we, uh at the last meeting, we discussed this. There was some public from the, or some comment from the public. And one of the things that the board asked for was an official survey to
Try to get on as a guest.
Um we did, um, let me just take a look really quick. Oops, oh, participants. There, there, go look at that. Um so there was some comment from the public. We did take a look at it. We did ask for a um official survey and Mike did get, you got that survey right and everything is um meets the subdivision um rules?
Yeah, a few days after the last meeting, lead investor dropped off a, a survey to us. And um as far as I can tell on there, uh the criteria as far as uh front yard, uh your front yard is a hundred and one point five feet and the front yard requirement is a hundred and your actual square footage a minimum is twenty thousand and there's actually twenty thousand five on there. So you have fi- you have five square foot sur- uh surplus.
Yeah.
Um so any questions uh from the board, Lisa?
I, you know, I just have a question that really doesn't have to do so much with this, but the fact that there's this private cemetery on one of these parcels, who is responsible for that? It's just, this is just something I'd like to know more about, actually.
Um, that would be staying not on one of those, uh not on the, it stays on the one that's, that's n- north, the one that we
It's, it's not on the, it's on our property where we're building a home. So it's, uh Rachel and I will be maintaining it, so.
But is, is that what ha- I mean, is that just goes with the property and whoever owns the property is responsible for maintaining it? I've often wondered, these are these historic cemeteries, I guess. And you see them occasionally along a roadside or whatever, and I've often been curious about that. That's, I thought, here's an opportunity to understand this. Um so this is your cemetery now, actually, or belongs to you, I guess. Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm very curious also about it, but it's uh, we have no plans to do anything to it or
Oh, no, I don't, I don't know if you can, probably. I'm sure there must
Yeah, I know, I mean.
But um they kind of, my curiosity was raised because I did note it and then I know that one of the people on Dart Drive brought it up at the last time as to whether it was shown on the, on the plan. And I said, yes, it was. But I just thought about it afterwards. I thought, how does that work exactly? Well, thank you.
I noticed when it sold to these guys that there wasn't any restrictions as far as how that was supposed to be handled or how it should be handled in the future, which is interesting. It just kind of conveyed with the property. It's not always the case.
Right, it was in the uh title or abstract or something, you know, it was some, it's just, I don't know, it's kind of weird.
About this, if you, if you mess with a cemetery, I guess you better not.
Right, Nat- Natalie mentioned she sure, she sure there's some state law about private cemeteries or cemeteries in general.
Sure.
Um, okay, any other uh comments, Mike, or anybody from the planning board? Okay, so um we do have a resolution to move forward with this. If uh people are ready to do that, I just need a motion to uh close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing for subdivision twenty-two-two forty-five ninety-two.
Motion by Lisa. Second by Pat, sorry, Jim. Uh all in favor? Uh so the public hearing is closed, so uh everybody should have, uh whether you're here or electronically, the resolution in front of them. So I'll read that off. Um so this is the Village of Lansing Planning Board Resolution. Oh, Mike actually has it up on the screen, so I'll try to summarize some of it, but resolution for final plat approval of minor subdivision number twenty-two-two dash forty-five ninety-two, adopted on July eleventh, twenty-twenty-two. Excuse me, getting over being, having a cold. Uh this matter involves consideration of the following proposed action. Sean and Rachel Ryan, owners of Seventy-seven Graham Road. Tax number, tax parcel number forty-six point one dash one dash six point twenty-four. Um are proposing to subdivide their point, their nine point three-three-four acre lot. I mentioned that earlier. Um on June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, the Village of Lansing Planning Board, in accordance with subsection D of section one twenty-five dash five of the Village of Lansing Code, reviewed the sketch plans submitted with respect to this proposed action and classified the proposed subdivision as a minor subdivision. And the planning board finds this to be a type-two action for seeker purposes. And on June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, in July eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, the Village of Lansing Planning Board held a public hearing regarding this proposed action and thereafter thoroughly reviewed and analyzed the proposed final subdivision plat and accompanying materials and information presented by and on behalf of the applicant in support of this proposed action, including information and materials related to environmental issues, if any, which the board deemed necessary or appropriate for its review. All other information and materials rightfully before the board and all issues raised during the public hearing and or otherwise raised in the course of the board's deliberations. Now therefore be had resolved as follows. Uh based upon all of its foregoing review and action, it is hereby determined by the Village of Lansing Planning Board that approval of the proposed Armsby Minor Subdivision is granted or denied. Yeah, have to change that one. Granted or denied, subject to the conditions and requirements set forth below. Um really just, um, what did I miss? Oh, yeah, that's it. So there really aren't any um additional conditions or requirements. Um the chairperson, the chairperson of the Village of Lansing Planning Board is hereby authorized and directed to sign the final plat for the approved minor subdivision in accordance with subsection G of section one twenty-five dash six and subsection A of section one twenty-five dash five of the Village of Lansing Code. Uh I will entertain a motion for this resolution uh granted or denied.
Nobody else is gonna do this? I move that. Okay, go ahead.
I'll do it. Go ahead, Lisa. You started.
Okay, um I move to grant the uh minor subdivision to twenty-two-two forty-five ninety-two.
Okay, second by uh, motion by Lisa, second by Pat, all in favor?
Hi.
unanimous. So we do have uh two copies of the final plat here. I will sign them after the meeting's over and um they will be available here at the village offices um during business hours for somebody to come and pick up those copies up. And you can coordinate that with Mike Scott if you have additional questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
So much.
Uh, okay, the next item on the agenda is uh sign review. Uh RAP Signs Incorporated is proposing a building-mounted pictorial sign, excuse me, located at sixty-six Brown Road, which is located in the Business and Technology District. As per Village Building Code, section one fifteen dash seven point two B one. Prior to the issuance of the required permit for such pictorial uh image or symbol, the proposed pictorial image or symbol must be approved by the planning board of the Village of Lansing. Um, do you want to kick us off on that, Mike?
Um, you pretty much said it with what uh you read through the uh agenda items. Basically, it meets all of the criteria needed for uh the actual plan or for the sign in that area of business and technology. It just has to have approval from the planning board along with the application, which I have. Um I see no issue with this sign whatsoever. So basically, it's uh, it, it's up to the uh planning board whether they approve this or not.
Any questions, Lisa or Jim?
I don't have any. If Mike says everything's okay, but um if we seen a picture of the sign, just I care, I'll say.
Should be a picture. And your, uh, Mike sent it out electronically. Yeah, there it is.
All right, I mean.
And all it is really is the circle and the words Titan, right? The logo and the Titan, word Titan.
Correct.
Yeah.
And, and that's not, that's not even, it's on a hanger, so it's not even facing the road as, as I look at this picture.
Right.
I believe it's facing uh west.
Yeah. Well, if it meets the planned sign area, I can't imagine that there's any issue here.
They don't necessarily have a planned sign area in that. You know, for the airport or whatnot, but this is, uh like I said, it's one of the section B one requires me, it says prior to issuance of a uh required permit for such pictorial image or symbol, the proposed pictorial image or symbol must be approved by the planning board uh the Village of Lansing.
So this is not a lighted sign, is that correct? It's just a
I don't believe it's, I don't believe it's lit.
Yeah, I looked and I didn't see anywhere where it mentioned, I mean, it looked like really a kind of, not a decal, but a flat sign right on the building with no lighting.
It just, it doesn't mention anywhere that I could see, but
I looked into.
Except that it says illumination there. What is that?
Oh, yeah, there, yeah, there is illumination. I missed that part.
Well, okay, I, because I couldn't see it electronically very well and I have to confess, so I couldn't. Okay, so do I, I would kind of like to know about that a little bit. It says, oh yeah, see, it does say illumination, yes.
Um, if, if this is where I'm pretty sure it is, it's, it's facing, it's really looking at, at the ramp area in the airport. You're not gonna see it. You're not gonna see it from the road in that area of the airport and particular, there's some really bright lights above the new customs building that are extremely bright, but you're not gonna see this from the road and it's gonna face the ramp.
I know.
Or the whole area is kind of lit up by other lights. Airport lights.
It's certainly not gonna disturb any of the public.
Yeah, no.
So Natalie, I would imagine just a motion, you don't need a resolution.
Um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the sign application form for to get a deviation.
I move we approve.
Motion by Pat?
I will second.
Second by Jim, all in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
There you go. Okay. That's item on the agenda is the review of proposed tree conservation and replacement law. So, um. Uh, there isn't really anything for us to act on tonight. We, uh, we, we had our, our special meeting, uh, last Thursday and spent a couple hours going through that. So again, thank you, everybody. Um, Mike or Natalie, did you have anything you wanted to share?
I will get out the most recent draft and the definitions as discussed in the Thursday meeting for consideration next meeting.
Okay, uh, any other discussion on that item? Okay, uh, next item on the list is the, or on the agenda is continued discussion on code updates. Anything there, Lisa?
I wanted to ask Brent actually, um, about what, when we're talking about the Maguire redevelopment. And SWIP, could you just, I, I guess we should perhaps know, but, um, is that something that we, you feel we need to change in our code?
It's actually not something that you can change. It's a state, it's part of the state, uh, code, state, uh, New York State D E C. That effectively gives the opportunity to, uh, existing. Properties that have existing impervious surfaces to not be subject to. A, a local ordinance that might say something like, hey, yeah, you, you got, you bought a building. That's a hundred percent impervious surface. You're going to have to now, you're, you're doing a, some kind of a site plan review, some, you know, uh, special use permit kind of thing. So, uh, we're going to make you do a hundred percent compliance with the, you know, uh. Stormwater management regulations. And then they don't really have any surface area, surfaces left to work with. So the state invented this thing called redevelopment standards. And it, and it says that a, a property that's being redeveloped. Is only exposed to having stormwater management. If, if, if. Concurred by the local law to be exposed for one hundred percent of new, any new. Impervious surfaces as well as a number. I may be a little off. I thought was fifteen percent, but I think. Maybe Ron Mogren was saying maybe it's twenty-five percent, but some, some small percentage of the existing runoff. Would be obligated to be included in the calculations for sizing of stormwater equipment. Or stormwater, um, installation. So, uh. As I've, you've heard me say it a couple of times recently and, and, um, I'm just restating what we've had for many years is, is that. Uh, we understand, the, the board has been consistent to say, we understand that redevelopment standards. Are in control here, but if there's any opportunity to do something. We feel that it's, and, uh, you know, the opportunity should be taken. And. So they would need to, if they, if they came back and said, Brent, there's absolutely no way we can do anything here. Alls we're going to be able to do is, um, you know, the, the redevelopment standard. Well, you know, I would have to then either agree or disagree. And then I would have to give advice to the planning board. As to whether or not they should move forward one way or the other.
Okay. I just didn't know whether this is something we had control over. We should add to our list of code updates or.
No, I mean, you could, you could formalize the policy, you know, the policy being. Uh, do the best you can, but quite honestly, I think more than likely it's more practical to do it. The way we're doing it because, uh, you know, I, I think probably people like Maguire and other, other people are, are. Gonna, you know, give us a, give us their best shot. And, you know, otherwise they might have to take a hard line and say. You know, we really don't have to do any more than X. And so I think that we're probably in pretty good shape. I guess I would certainly leave that. To Natalie for her opinion about that, but I, I feel that it's working and at the moment really wouldn't warrant, uh, any change there.
Sounds like it. Yep, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike or Natalie, anything on the code update related?
I believe I owe the board some sample special permit revision laws. I've been speaking to other municipal attorneys as to their codes and how they. Um, manage their special permit program. So I will get some. Samples out to the board this week.
Okay. Trustee report, Lisa?
Um, trustee report? It was Independence Day.
That's right. I was going to trade July with you and you said no.
Exactly.
Okay, um, any other things people want to bring up before we adjourn?
Well, I just, so I think, um, so our next meeting is July twenty-sixth. I think that's an important, um, Lansing Meadows anniversary.
Yep, I do think Eric is planning on being here for, for that meeting.
I will send out, I will resend out that resolution. So everyone can take a look at that.
That would be very helpful.
There's a lot of complicated dates on there of when he needs to have this by that done and whatnot. So it'll be interesting.
When you send that out with the, with the various dates about what has to be done when, could you just kind of tell us where he is with those things like? This is done, this is half done, this is not even started. I hope there's nothing that's not even started. Let me just start there.
Uh, at this point, foundations aren't started.
Well, that's true. I forgot about that. Okay, well, um, yeah, okay. Um, I will mention that I do have a couple of emails, um, from folks about, um, people interested in joining the planning board. So I would have reached out to them last week, except I was sick for two days. So I decided to lay in bed and watch movies instead. Uh, so I will reach out to them, um, either tonight or tomorrow morning.
One of them I had forwarded to you, Mike. And, um, as it turns out, she was on vacation or away herself. I got a message back out of the office until today. So I think you're slightly off book on that.
Perfect. Okay. Great. Um, anything else, Lisa or Jim?
Uh, nothing for me.
Me either.
Mike or Natalie? I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Pat?
Second.
Second by Lisa. All those in favor? I, uh, at seven fifty-nine P M.